Good afternoon. I'll call to order this meeting of the Lincoln City Council. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located at the rear of council chambers by the door in which you entered. The meeting today is part of the ongoing development of the 2024-2026 city budget. The mayor submitted a proposed budget to the council on June 10th. City departments provided further details and information at two council meetings on June 11th and June 12th. By council resolution, council members submitted initial tentative changes to the city budget to the budget office by 3:00 PM Friday, July 12th. Five tentative changes were proposed. One was subsequently withdrawn. Three of the remaining, three of the remaining three proposals were voted to move forward. I think it's three of the four, pardon me. By council resolution, council members have a second opportunity to submit additional proposed changes to the budget, which they did so by 3:00 PM Friday, August 9th. Six additional proposals were submitted, and those were delivered by the budget office to all council members as well as posted online. Today, we will discuss those changers. Later this week, on Wednesday, August 14th at 1:00 PM, we will vote on whether to have the budget office and the city law deliver those as final amendments to the city budget. The order of business is as follows today. The additional proposals will be taken in order, and now I'm going to offer a point of privilege. Councilman Brody's proposal was the first up today, and we'll hold that one until he's present to discuss. I will read the change submitted to the budget office with a short dis- And voila. So, the additional proposals will be taken in order, number six through 11. I will read the change submitted to the budget office with a short description, and then invite the proposer to speak about their proposal and any other information they'd like to give us. Then, I will invite any comments from council members, as well as questions for the proposer or city staff. And as a reminder, we will not be voting on any of these proposals today. That will occur in two days, on Wednesday, August 14th at 1:00 PM in these same council chambers. And with that, I will read the first of the additional proposals. Number six, submitted by council member Weber. Appropriate $115,000 of general fund reserves for fiscal year 2024 and '25 to Lincoln Police Department for Training, including the following courses: National Association Field Training Officer Training, Survival Tactics Instructor Certification, Senior Management Institute for Police, ICAT Instructor Course, that's Integrating Communications Assessment and Tactics, Resilient Minds, and School Resource Officer Training. Any appropriations remaining at 8:3125 shall be re-appropriated for similar training purposes until 115,000 of appropriations is fully expended. Councilman Weber.
Thank you, Chair Washington, and thank you, members of the council. I submitted this proposal Thursday afternoon with the budget office, and I first want to thank my colleague, Councilman Tom Duden, for bringing this issue forward. I think that there is a clear consensus that the seven of us support having as well-trained of a police force as we possibly can, and I think that had it not been for Councilman Duden's original proposal, that this would be something that we wouldn't be talking about today. So, I just wanted to give him credit for that. When we had this conversation back in July, that is the first time I became aware that over 60 training requests had been denied for members of the Lincoln Police Department, with the main reason being funding source. So, I want to talk about how I got to 115,000 for these six trainings. Originally, I broke it down in the following ways. 45,000 to Resilient Minds, that would provide three three-day courses, providing attendees with a roadmap dealing in behavioral health. It would build resilience with employees in the police department. It would help with retention. It would improve mental health, and it would leave to, lead to positive interactions with colleagues and members in the community externally. Another 10,000 to ICAT, which as Chair Washington said, is Integrating Communications Assessment and Tactics. This would provide for the essential costs of gas, lodging, other expenses when it comes to transportation and travel, to allow approximately 10 officers to participate in a course that focuses on de-escalation and dealing with those who are experiencing a crisis. To me, that, that seems like a worthy appropriation. Another 15,000 to the Senior Management Institute for Police. This would provide an intensive training in the latest management concepts and practices with senior members of the Lincoln Police Department. The results of this would also be helping with retention, increasing productivity, as well as building trust both internally and externally with community stakeholders. Another 24,000 to the Gracie Survival Tactics Instructor Certification. That amount would provide 12 instructors to be certified in a program that consists of 23 lessons of the most common scenarios that law enforcement professionals are likely to incur. This will lead to safer interactions with our officers and our citizens. And then, an additional 12,000 to the National Association of Field Training Officers, FTO Training. This would allow for hosting a local course for all 50 FTOs to attend a nine-hour course that focuses on leadership, ethics, evaluation guidelines, which will also lead to increased productivity, better decision-making, better interactions with members in the community, as well as also increasing retention. If you guys can sense a theme, it comes down to productivity, retention, and interactions with, with community members. So, that brings us to about 106,000. The additional 9,000 is to account for price fluctuations, increase in applications, and potential broader SRO training, which is, I know, a goal of the Lincoln Police Department, to make sure that we are keeping the students of Lincoln as safe as we possibly can, with it being the first day of back-to-school. So, that's, that's how I got to 115,000. I also just want to walk briefly without going into my colleague's proposal. A primary difference is the funding mechanism, right? The difference between general fund reserves versus city council reserves. To me, the primary reason that I think general fund reserves would be a lot more of an appropriate funding mechanism is just the dollar-for-dollar, right? If you look at council reserves versus the reserves in the other due, other two departments that the proposal appropriates to, you can see it's not even close when it comes, when it comes to dollars. Taking, I think, reserves from the smallest department and allocating them to the two largest funded departments, who also have outsized reserves compared to the council, seems inappropriate to me. However, I do think it's important that we make sure our police officers get the training that they need, and that's why I'm supportive of getting them that training through the general reserve fund. And I, I'd be happy to answer more about the funding mechanism if any of my colleagues have questions. I also, it was no secret that this was something that I was working on. I think I had informed a few of my colleagues that this was something I wanted to collaborate on. Had I known that there would be another proposal, I would have been thrilled to work with them on it. And that is why I do plan on introducing an amendment to change the allocation from 115,000 to 100,000. I think that, that is a good starting point in making sure that we're able to find that compromise and, and continue having a conversation on funding mechanism, which I welcome any questions. I also was not aware of LFR's need for training, and that's something that I would also be open to incorporating, and I look forward to further conversation with my colleagues on that. And I'm also open to the restrictiveness of the appropriation, which actually brings me back to my proposal. My actual proposal does not earmark the, you know, 45,000 to Resilient Minds, the 10,000 to ICAT, et cetera. Those were the numbers I used in coming to the determination of 115,000. I wanted to leave that number flexible for the Lincoln Police Department to be able to decide what best fits their needs when it comes to individualized trainings. I just remember in July, there was some question about how Councilman Duden got to the 100,000, and in anticipation of that, I wanted to make sure I was prepared in how I got to the number of 115,000. Also, a part of this proposal does reappropriate any unexpended funds from this, these trainings back into the Lincoln Police Department for future trainings. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do any other counselors have questions for Councilman Weber? Go ahead.
I just want to say thanks to Brody for bringing this forward, because it really, when it became clear that there was a movement for the council to appropriate more funding to LPD for training, I really appreciate you working to find a consensus on how to get to the end result while still addressing concerns that council members had, and the thoroughness, because I think that this provides a guide but isn't too prescriptive on how dollars could be spent. So, I really appreciate your consensus building on it to get to the end result and still trying to bring as many of us on as possible.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. And that was the intent, to, to establish clear guidelines without being too restrictive with, with the funding. So, I appreciate you pointing that out.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Councilman Duden.
That's okay. Yeah, Councilman Weber, I appreciate your, your addition on this and what have you. This was a proposal that I initially brought forward, and I think Councilman Carlson appropriately suggested that we should get more information about the types of trainings and what have you. So, this list of trainings were actually supplied to you by myself and Councilman Chairman Washington and Councilman Beckius, because when I first brought this up, and when I first brought up the source of my proposal, which is next in line here, I felt that we had way too much money in the council office's coffers, and suggested that we would re-appropriate that, because I don't think it's fair for any area of government to start their own savings account with ideas to possibly use it for something later without knowing what that something is. So, that's why, that, I guess that's probably the biggest difference between your proposal and the one that comes up next, but actually, the source of these trainings were supplied to you from us, and we obtained it from the police department's command staff and personnel and training as well. And I, I guess I don't recall you being there at that, that meeting when we met with the Lincoln Police Department. And then, I commend Chairman Washington for going forward. I, I wanted to do the same thing for the fire department to, again, be equitable about training purposes, and, and Washington actually determined that LFR has much more certifications that they have to maintain. And so, when those firefighters aren't on fire calls, sometimes they're sitting at a desk in front of a computer, working on their certification trainings and what have you.
And we can get to that.
I feel like we're getting into the second proposal, but I do need to respond, Madam Chair.
I wanted to-
I didn't think I was finished.
I just wanted to, it's easy, I'm, I'm going to let you finish, but I did want to say that we're going to talk about LFR at the next proposal.
Right.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll kind of end it there, but I wanted everybody to know kind of how, the history of how this kind of came about. And Brody's right, it does improve productivity, but the key thing is it improves communication. And what I mean improving communication, I mean, we want officers taking reports on the street, getting accurate information from victims and witnesses, so that the Criminal Division has an easier time of following up on those particular cases, especially our, some of the more major crimes and what have you. So, anything that you can do to make that better, you're going to end up increasing the, the clearance rate for the police department, and you're going to have more victims that'll be satisfied because justice was brought forward and things like that. So, that's the, that's the whole goal there. It just makes LPD that much better, and the same will go for LFR, too. So, that's all I got to say.
All right. Would anyone else like to interject?
I, I would like to respond to Councilman Duden, and I do appreciate you relaying the information provided by Lincoln Police Department, and that's why both on July 29th and August 6th, I reached out to see how we could collaborate on this issue together. And one of your co-introducers was also aware from July 25th that I planned on working on this amendment. I would have been happy to collaborate. That's why I reached out. After not hearing anything, I wanted to make sure that we got our police officers the training that they needed, which is why this is proposal number six, because it was the first proposal introduced.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, Councilman Weber, just to clarify, this is, would be one-time money then that's appropriated, not an ongoing addition to the training, right?
Correct.
The thought is to try to catch up the training.
Correct, yep. Catch up to speed when it comes to training, and since we would be apportioning the, and as amended, 100,000, any of those dollars that are unspent would stay with the Lincoln Police Department for training purposes specifically.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to submittal number seven. Number seven was submitted by council members Beckius, Duden, and Washington to move $200,000 from fiscal year, for fiscal year 2024-25 from City Council reappropriations to Lincoln Police Department, $100,000, and Lincoln Fire and Rescue, $100,000 training budgets. Appropriations will focus on increasing scenario-based training, employee resiliency, and training equipment. Would either Beckius or Duden like to address this?
Sure. I'll go ahead and get started. The first part of the appropriation for the Lincoln Police Department does not vary much from Councilman Weber's proposal, but it does go ahead and appropriate another $100,000 to Lincoln Fire and Rescue. As Councilman Duden stated very clearly, as Councilwoman Washington is, is well aware, Lincoln Fire and Rescue certifications and ongoing education is different than Lincoln Police Department's. This particular $100,000 that would be allocated to Lincoln Fire and Rescue, as detailed to an email to my fellow council members, includes props for water mapping at $27,000, props for trench rescue at $32,000, fire apparatus operating academy training for $10,000, technical rescue technician academy for $15,000, and then some forcible entry window props for about $13,000 or so, and then the purchase of a burn box for around $3,000 or so. So, that's generally how you get to the $100,000 expenditure on the LFR side. I would just like to take a moment to thank Councilman Duden for his work in originally proposing that both entities are included in additional training dollars. I would further like to thank Councilman Duden and Councilwoman Washington for their work and their leadership in making sure that there is a wide bipartisan support for training for both LPD and LFR.
Any other comments or questions for, on this proposal?
I, I think that's all I wanted to add, so, thank you.
Councilman Weber.
Thank you, Chair. So, I have two questions, and I'd be curious to hear from either Councilman Beckius or Councilman Duden, just the rationale again on why it would be more appropriate to take this out of a department's reserves instead of the general fund reserves?
Well, my reason, I, I can't speak for my two colleagues, Councilmen.
Yeah. I'd love to just hear your perspective, and then Councilman Duden's.
Sure. So, at the end of the fiscal year, the city council will have about $390,000 estimated in our, in our fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. That's over 100%, it's about 124% of what our annual expenditures actually are. We don't feel like there's, at least I don't feel like there's a reason for the city council to be sitting on a fund balance that's over a year of operating budget. I think it shows a good faith effort to make sure that constituents understand that public safety is priority number one in our community. And I think it's a, it still leaves $190,000 in the city council fund, which is over 50% of an annual operating budget for the city council.
Councilman Duden.
I'll echo that, that same thing. And at the same time, I'm, I'm going to hopefully look at this as something that maybe all departments could do. Look at your unused funds and do something with them. Transfer them to another department that needs the money or something like that, or just simply give it back to the taxpayers, which would in turn maybe lower the levy. So, I'm kind of making it not only something that we're doing or want to do as far as the city council office, but then at the same time, make it kind of a challenge for other departments throughout the city government, so.
And, you know, that's, that's interesting to hear. I, I do wonder if that is the path that we will end up going down in future budgets if we, we start doing this. If we'll just start, you know, we incentivize a department to be fiscally responsible, and then use those funds, you know, for payouts for employees, right? Things that aren't genuinely, generally budgeted, right? And then, once they do their job well and effective with their dollars and their pennies, so that way then they can provide body cameras for their, for all of their officers, we're going to come back around, take money out of their reserves, and give it to another department. I, I think we are seriously setting a dangerous precedent by going into one department's reserves, who has an entirely different budget, and then re-apportioning that to another department. I also get genuinely concerned, what message it sends to parks and rec? What message it sends to libraries? What message it sends to health? That the city council is willing to dip into our reserves for two other departments? And I am a huge fan of LFR and LPD. That's why I brought my own amendment. That is my concern, though, is what message does that send, right? Public safety is a priority, but so is making sure that kids have books in libraries, and adults in libraries. Making sure that we're actually funding our parks, making sure that the, the airpark pool is being taken care of, making sure that sidewalks are being repaired, and making sure that streets are being repaired. Are we going to dip into council reserves to benefit every single department, or are we going to pick our favorites? That is where I get concerned with this proposal, and that is why I really think that this needs to be a proposal that comes from the general fund reserves. I am more than open to working with my colleagues on seeing what we can do with council dollars. I want to be very mindful of the message that that sends, though, to our other departments that have to budget just as tightly, and I also worry about what these decisions can lead to long-term.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments?
I got a couple of questions that I like to ask folks individually. Councilman Duden, you talked about why you added fire back in to create things equally, so I appreciate you addressing that, that concern. I'm kind of curious, now that there's two proposals on there, have the individuals that originally approached you about adding training in, have they mentioned anything about the difference between the funding mechanism to you, or expressed a desire to fund it out of general reserves versus council reserves?
I understand both.
Okay. And then, a question that I have for Tom Beckius is, from what I understand, especially with the fire portion of it, the council approached the fire department. The fire department didn't approach the council in asking this, and so I'm kind of curious, you know, how many individual cops and firefighters did you speak to about this, and did you hear any response or thoughts for them on your proposal?
I, I think it should be clear that when the, the mayor approaches directors, that the directors then come back with the city budget. It's not normal for appropriate, for directors to come and request more from council members. It's the work of the council in order to go and make sure that the mayor's appropriated budget covers the expenses that we deem to be appropriate.
I think I would probably disagree on that, in that, you know, I want directors to be able to come and tell me when there's deficits that they feel like that they can't talk to the administration about. I want frontline staff to feel comfortable to approach the council to say, "We're not getting this need met." And so, I, and I've had those conversations with people at all levels, so I think that's probably a difference that we have. With Councilwoman Washington, you know, my question for you about training is, knowing that like our fire stations with reports that have come out saying that almost all of our buildings are lacking appropriate hot zone transitions between apparatus space and living quarters for our fire stations, and that hot zones in stations are target for cancer-causing agents and various toxins, why is training a priority versus the facilities where firefighters sleep at?
I don't believe my proposal says that training is a priority over where firefighters sleep. I want to address the first question, because I was, so when Councilman Duden brought forth two proposals in July, and then he retracted the LFR, I had already started a conversation with Chief Engler, LFR Chief Engler, to discuss whether or not there were any training deficits, and I asked him to explain to me a little bit the differences between LPD and LFR, though he's not in LPD. He could explain how many hours were necessary for every firefighter, and then the specialty trainings that were required for additional, like for EMTs and water rescue, et cetera. He also explained that there was a, a lack of training props, and that they did not have that money budgeted. He explained the differences and how, he explained the details of how their budget was created, and where they have to take on some of, they have to absorb some of the overages, and I thought that there was a real need for additional training dollars. Specifically, 75% of those are in training props, so that they can be used again and again and again, so that those aren't, those are, I thought, were really appropriate one-time expenses to make certain that they have that training equipment, and then there is some additional training. Now, if we're going to sit down and have a, a long, broader conversation about facilities, which I know that we did, I've read their strategic plan, and at, when we were having, when we had a lot of CARES dollars, we directed a significant portion of CARES dollars to LFR facilities, and I know that we have a strategic plan for dealing with facilities for LFR. I think that the issue that you mentioned about hot zone transition is incredibly important, but I'd like to deal, and we have them in part in the CIP already, so, but I'd like to take a look at that within the existing CIP, the LFR Strategic Plan for Facilities, and then if we have still large gaps, then we can talk about that. But I wasn't wishing to interject myself into what I know will be incredibly complicated, multifaceted discussion on facilities.
I appreciate that. One thing that I've heard a lot about this proposal is, you know, that it's like a symbolic, or it's a good gesture, you know, and I think this doesn't address like the systemic issue of lack of training dollars. If it's one-time funding, doesn't address the lack of training dollars going towards first responders. So, I mean, if we're trying to do things on a, as a gesture of draining our council reserves, I would almost argue that the health and safety portion of it would be a greater display of meeting that basic need as opposed to training, so.
I didn't see it as a gesture, so let's just be clear. I'm not trying to wave a flag and do nothing else. I believe that this is a good use of dollars. I believe that LFR and LPD both need additional training dollars, and this is a, a one way to rectify it. And that's why we have these proposals brought forward. This is why we have discussion.
So, if, and I guess this is a question for whoever wants to answer it, you know, if we are, if the concern is, you know, the amount of money that we have in council reserves, then I would be interested in looking at the other council, or the other reserve budgets for other departments, and partnering folks to see how we can re-appropriate those dollars to meet current needs. So, I don't know if there's a response to that, but I just think that, I just wanted to make that statement. If the concern is that the council has too big of a reserves, then I think that, you know, maybe we look at the other departments then also.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I have just one other question that I did want to ask Councilman Duden. $200,000, 100,000 to each LPD and LFR, how do you get to the, I, I'm just genuinely curious how we got to 100,000 for each. The information that you relayed to me from LPD even pointed out 106, and so I'm just curious why 100?
Well, they already had 60 proposed in their budget, so I guess I just rounded it to the 100,000. Actually, I withdrew my proposal from LFR because I, I was waiting to get some- to get some information from Chief Engler, but didn't, and that's why I withdrew it. And then Chairman Washington did get that information, so, so I'll let her respond to that. I will like make a comment to, I don't, I don't, I don't think taking two hundred thousand out of councilmen's funds is draining the funds. We're leaving plenty of funds there. And so I just, I, I think that word draining is kind of condescending. The funds haven't been used, and we're heading into a new, a new budget year. It just seems appropriate to move that money to somewhere else, or, like you said, you know, give it back. But the, public safety is a real critical area for Lincoln, and we've seen a lot of violent, violent crime. We've seen just a lot of things happening on a local level for both fire. And that, and actually, when it comes to getting that information, you know, I've gone on ride-alongs with law enforcement, and I did the same with the Lincoln Fire Department. And I can tell you, jumping in and out of that fire truck, six feet off the ground, is quite a feat for an old duffer like myself. So, but I went on, I think, nine runs, that particular shift that I rode with them, and just truly professionals in both departments. And I just want to make sure that we maintain that level of proficiency and professionalism.
Another question that I had is, and I just want, I think we've been discussing it, I just want to make sure that it gets asked. Was the rationale behind a hundred thousand to both LFR and LPD in the name of, like, being equitable to both departments?
It was at first, and then, then after investigation, which was requested by Carlson, Councilman Carlson, and some work by Chairman Washington with Lincoln Fire, it was based on need. And I think you kind of summed it up as well, by all of the training things that were turned down. And the one thing that you do not want to do with these departments is lose that high level of professionalism from these departments, because people are asking for additional training, training which actually gets passed on to other employees. And if they keep asking for it, and they keep getting turned down, eventually they'll quit asking. And we don't want that type of a scenario, I don't think, with either department.
Absolutely. I think that's something that we all agree on. And then my last question is, what happens in your proposal with unexpendated funds?
From the training?
Yeah, from this appropriation.
I guess, hard to cross that bridge right now, but I'd say they would still keep it and apply it towards additional training.
Is that?
You know, obviously, obviously, you're going to have people signing up for training, and someone might get sick, or they might have a kid sick, they might not be able to attend, and so that might change the numbers, but you might be able to increase it in another area. So I'm not going to micromanage the police department or the fire department's training protocols on who gets to go and who doesn't, that sort of thing. That's for them to do.
So I just want to be clear, then, that the intent of your proposal is that unexpended funds from this appropriation will then be re-appropriated to those same departments for training purposes? Because I, I don't see it, so I just want to make sure that's the intent.
Yeah, that's the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to supplemental number eight, and I am keeping my eye on the clock. I don't want to reduce the amount of time we have for conversation, because we need to understand. But we've got a few more proposals, and we have, right now, about thirty minutes. Number eight, submitted by Councilmember Shob for fiscal year 2024-25, to appropriate a hundred and twenty-five thousand in one-time funding from general fund reserves to urban development operating budget to support community outreach efforts within urban development in coordination with the Office of the Chief Sustainability Officer. Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we've been working on the budget for several months now. And as many of you know, I worked with several people in the mayor's office and other departments to put some money in the budget for one, for a pilot program for heat pumps last budget cycle. This budget cycle, that money is still there. We had a public hearing a week ago today, and members of our community came up and said they liked it, they'd like to do more. I met with members of the community after that, and we all were a little bit concerned that the members of our community that fall in the category of low to moderate income didn't take advantage of the program as much as we'd hoped. This money is designed to help urban development and the Chief Sustainability Officer develop strategies to inform all the residents of our community that this program is available. According to the budget numbers, there's about a hundred and eighteen thousand households in our community. This is about a dollar per household, to try to inform the community that it's an opportunity for them to save money on their energy bills, to be environmentally conscious, and just make Lincoln a better place for everyone to live.
Are there any questions for Councilman Shob? I have questions for Councilman Shob.
Who? Ready?
Okay. So can you?
No.
I, wait. Okay. So I heard the same testimony, and there is a lot of positive energy and desire for the heat pump program to be expanded, additional dollars to go into that program. So I, I hear you on that. I heard the constituents say very loudly they liked the program. I understand the, the seeming challenge there is of expending the dollars in households with low incomes. They also may benefit, I mean, they would benefit from a heat pump, electric heat pump program, but you're asking that we add additional dollars to urban development to let people know the program exists?
In part, yes. I think I did, I'm sorry, will you finish with the question?
I'm a little concerned about more money, money just to let people know the program exists, when people were really asking us for more money to, for heat pumps, for the actual heat pump. And so I guess I'm trying to understand, is there wiggle room in your proposal to allow some of that money to go to actual heat pumps? Or is this like a full-time job for a staffer in urban development to market the program?
From those two options you gave me, I would, I'll go with column A.
Okay.
To be very honest with you, I trust the people in urban development and the Sustainability Office. They are experts in this area. I tried to craft my amendment, it's just in support of community outreach, that might be in the form of mailers, postcards, town hall meetings, that might be in the form of additional funds, some, for someone. I think there's an effort in commu, in urban development and Sustainability Office to enhance the program where it will be more beneficial to more residents. I did see a report on the after-action, after the proposal, after the end of the budget cycle, where many of the contractors that installed these units weren't sharing the message with their customers as much. There was one installer that had a high number, and the rest of them were very, very low. That might be a place we need to go talk to more to contractors. I trust the Urban Development and Sustainability Office to do this. There is wiggle room in the proposal. I did not say, I did not give a list of things they wanted, they should do, because I thought they would be better, better equipped to make that list.
Well, I would agree when it comes to marketing. I'm not a marketing guru, so I'm not going to suggest they spend such and such on postcards or whatever. But I guess outreach efforts, to me, doesn't sound like the physical heat pump. So I guess I wanted to know if, if you were open to, or if maybe someone from urban development or from the Sustainability Office would, could explain, like, would there, could there possibly be a way for us to say, for outreach efforts and heat pumps?
Since we're not voting today, there's always opportunities to amend this on Wednesday.
Okay. I appreciate that. Director Hein, did you want to add something in?
Sure. Good afternoon. Peter Hein, Director of Urban Development. Five five five, South Ten Street, forgot the address. Yeah, I think this amendment is, is a, is a wonderful idea. Part of it is, when we started the program, I think in all of our heads, it was, oh, go to a home, take the old heat pump out, put a new one in, and it's more efficient, and it's easy. But I can tell you, what we met with was the reality. So it could be replace one, that, that's pretty easy. It could be that we have to modify something that was there, the duck doesn't fit, or, you know, whatever. It could be that we had to add one where there isn't one, for example. So Randy with Aging Partners, we were just talking about one of their constituents, a person in their eighties who had a home that was around a hundred degrees a week or so ago, and they brought a small air conditioner into the first floor, and the grandson came downstairs dripping in sweat, because the upstairs was probably hotter than that. And so in some of these requests from the folks that are in the LMI, there might not be a system. So we can go in there and look at that, or the system is so old, it's just not even functioning. The other thing that we've, we've looked at is the need to upgrade the electrical system that might not be functioning correctly. So that's just looking at sort of the work we were doing for these systems. The other portion, as that, as was mentioned, was educating the contractors to see what support is there. And I think there's a lot of bandwidth where, for, for that education. And then, lastly, just pairing these benefits with our other loans from CDPG and home improvement loans. And I think adding some language that allows us, as you, as you remember, one of my reports, we turned some of this funding into the grant funding, and then one of our loans that would support this. And so having these funds educate people to go out into the community, so we want to educate our staff, how we talk to folks, and how we combine things to be more efficient. We want to educate individuals who live in these homes, and we want to educate the contracting group that's there. And so, and that's not just individual contractors, but also, you know, there's contractor groups that we could work with as well. So I think it would be a wonderful thing to expand that language.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I would also just mention that Bloomberg reported in 2023 that twenty-three hundred people in this country died from heat. So this is important. This is important on both the heating and the cooling side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sobering. The ninth proposal, submitted by Councilmember Duden for fiscal year 24-25, reduce, is to reduce Parks and Recreation budget by, by twenty-four hundred dollars. Online gold, silver, bronze ballfield reservation fee increases of one dollar in fiscal year 2024-25 are projected to increase the Parks and Recreation budget by twenty-four hundred dollars. This proposal would eliminate that funding and request the Parks Director to keep the online ballfield reservation fee level for 2024-25. Councilman Duden?
I brought this forward after we heard testimony from individuals about the condition of our ballfields in Lincoln, and also witnessed some of those deficiencies myself. And going along with that, it's my pledge to do everything I can to improve those conditions, whether it's through corporate public partnerships, fundraising, what have you. I met with the Parks Director and pledged the same. I've done the same thing with the constituents, that I'd like to see these fields improved. And at the same time, I found out that some coaches, when they rent fields, are dipping into their own pockets to do it. And I felt that was unfair to them. We might not get as many people coaching youth activities in Lincoln, if they're having to do that. What I'm hoping for is that, in working with the Lincoln Parks Foundation, that eventually we can start a fund, so that we can improve the, the fields, the covers over the dugouts, fencing, trees, so that you can sit in the shade during a ballgame and, and watch your grandson or son or daughter play. And I just thought, in all fairness, I asked Maggie if she could keep it the same the first year, and increase it the second year, because by the second year, we'll, we will hopefully see some improvements in the conditions for the use in Lincoln.
I think I have, oh, I'm sorry, I should ask others, if they have a question?
I do. A question, maybe a little bit of a statement, too. I'm very concerned about this issue, too, of the ballfields. I know we've talked a little bit, Tom, to her, Councilman Duden, excuse me, too. My concern with this is, is we're taking money, twenty-four hundred dollars away from the program we're trying to improve. For me, it seems that some better language would be to maybe earmark that twenty-four hundred dollar additional fee increase. For one we hear a lot is Johnson Park. And so to me, I think going on that front end, I know twenty-four hundred dollars, it doesn't seem like very much, but it can make an impact, and it can work to improve as we develop the more formalized ballfield master plan or, or plan going forward. And so I, I would be supportive of this if it was moving things forward, getting that twenty-four hundred dollars towards actually improving our ball, ballfields. But I do have some concerns with, with how it's written right now.
I have a.
So I'm going to call on Councilman Weber, then I'd like to interject a question for Director Stuckey-Ross.
And I just, I have a quick question for Councilman Carlson. Councilman, do you plan on introducing an amendment, then, to earmark rather than take away?
Yeah, I, I certainly would, would be willing to do that, and interested in doing just that.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that as well.
I have a question for Director Stuckey-Ross. I totally understand the, the amount of, of concern people have with the ballfields. People certainly were very loud when they were speaking with us about the condition of the ballfields, and I think everyone knows I'm super involved and invested in youth sports. But I also think I need to have a better understanding of your budget process, or at least I want everyone to understand. So can you tell me, is Parks and Rec an enterprise-funded program, meaning that when people pay fees, those fees directly go to the sport, or the field, or the shelter in which they're renting or setting aside for themselves, preserving?
Thank you for the question. One part of our work is enterprise-funded, and that's our municipal golf program, but no other programs in our department are enterprise, so.
And so when someone pays a rental fee for the shelter, does that, that money doesn't go right back to that shelter?
No, it does not.
Where does it, what does it fund instead?
Across the board are, we have a lot of different revenue sources. So fees that we collect go across the gamut of our work. It's just part of what funds us. It's hard to say these funds go exactly to this program, because that's just not how we're set up. But obviously, we have a balanced budget, and fees are an important part of how we get balanced.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a question for Director Stuckey-Ross on this proposal? Thank you. All right. Number ten, submitted by Councilmember Bowers, to increase funding to a total of three million for the transportation sidewalk program for each year within the 2024 to 2030 capital improvement program, add six point one million for sidewalk improvements to the currently proposed municipal improvements bond issuance for a total issuance authorization of no more than nineteen million dollars.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Director Liz Elliott, to, for helping put this together. Thank you to the administration for their support of it, and thank you to the councilmembers that have identified support of this proposal. Thank you to the public for speaking out and getting their voice heard on this. And I'm also grateful to the process, which allows us to add amendments to the budget after our latest hearing. What this boils down to is that our city should be accessible regardless of a person's ability or what zip code they live in. In the nineties, voters transferred over responsibility of sidewalk maintenance to the city with no additional funds, and we've been playing catch-up ever since. We've got great staff at Lincoln Transportation Utilities, but we need to give them the tools to be able to do their job. My story is not unique. I want to be able to take my mom for a walk in the, in her wheelchair in the neighborhood and where I live and grew up. Unfortunately, that currently can't happen. Wheelchairs are not the only mobility device. People have walkers, families have strollers. All stages of life are impacted by having sidewalks that are uneven, unfixed, or possibly unsafe. What this does is this would use municipal infrastructure bonds to double fund repair for the next six years. This brings it up to about three million dollars. How we got to the three million dollars is transportation. How we got to the $3 million is Transportation identified that that was probably about the capacity for the workforce that we have in our city to get our sidewalks up. By putting this in, we would have an interest rate of, you know, 3.5 interest rate, potentially even lower, which would beat the inflation rate. For questions specifically about funding, I'd ask Director Elliott or the Budget Department to answer that. But this essentially allows us to quit playing around and to get aggressive about accessibility.
Are there any questions for Councilman Bowers on this? Councilman Beck, yes?
If Councilman Bowers would like me to direct finance questions to Director Elliott, then I would like to speak with Director Elliott, please.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Director. Could you go over the debt service on this proposal?
Yes, so this is, as Councilman Bowers said, this is the six, let's see, a 6.1 on the bonds that would be spread out over, sorry, I'm just pulling up my numbers here. That would be, allow us, it'd be two different tranches of $3 million. I wonder where I'm looking at. I don't have the most updated, sorry. Thank you. We played around with a lot of different versions, so. And so this would be a 2025 bond series. That would be just a tad over $6 million. And then an additional $6 million bond series in 2028. Yeah, 2028 would be the two bondings that we would be able to do. That would allow us to do a nearly double our current investment for the next, one, two, six-year CIP is what we would be able to continue that out. And as Councilman Bowers indicated, the one thing I should mention, this is our dedicated sidewalk fund. This does not include sidewalks that have to be done in conjunction with other street projects. That is all part of the street projects. So this is $3 million dedicated just for specific dedicated sidewalk projects spread throughout the community. In addition, we would continue to do the sidewalk improvements that are required with any street project that we do. So we would actually be investing a little bit more than $3 million annually with those two sources combined. But that would be, those additional ones with street projects are part of our street project, highway allocation funds, those types of things.
And then with the repayment of the debt service.
Yes.
Could you speak to the length of the term of payment and what kind of financial obligation that would require future councils to obligate themselves to going forward?
These are both projected to be 11-year term, so repayment over 11 years. We are anticipating, because of the city's great credit ratings, that we would be looking at roughly about a 3.5% interest rate during that term. The annual debt service is about $673,000 each of those 11 years.
And then, so the second bond series that would be issued would not be, we would be paying on that until 2039?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, do you know the total amount of interest paid for the bond series as proposed at the 3.5% level?
Yeah, I'm going to look over and see if any of my finance partners have that number with them. I'm not sure. Who are you going to call?
I'm estimating it to be at 2.6, is that about correct?
That is, approximately, that would be what it is.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't want to give the wrong numbers, so.
Thank you, Director.
Would you say the number again, I'm sorry?
Approximately 2.6 million over the entire term.
And I think the other thing I have to throw in there that, you know, this also beats the inflation rate as prices continue to rise with, you know, concrete or, you know, whatever equipment that's needed. This is a way to save some money because we're able to do it now, which would be cheaper as opposed to keep kicking it down the road and as prices are only going to continue to rise.
And right now, we, on average, it's about a 5% construction increase each year. So this, this interest rate is below that. So this would allow us to be able to get more done sooner and requiring less funding for that.
I think, I don't know if my question is for Director Elliott or if it's for finance or the mayor's office or the law department, but.
Between us, I'll answer.
All of you, all of you. Anyway, I appreciate beating inflation and beating the inflation rate specifically in construction. I'm just trying to understand, and I know we have a CIP, and it always shifts and rolls as we move forward. So it's always, we're forecasting out six years, but we don't appropriate the money for six years. So I'm trying to understand today's decision, today, in quotation marks, decision to appropriate or to commit ourselves to 2028. So it feels like we've stepped out of this biennium and into the next, and I just would like to get a better understanding of what allows us to do that.
John Carlson, I work in the mayor's office and help with the budget team, and I'm staffed at LTU. So the only action that would be associated with this amendment would be that first tranche. So even though we've run it out just to demonstrate how it would work the entire time, because you're absolutely right, this budget is just the first two years of the CIP. The CIP would be amended to reflect that, so you'd have the planning years of three through six. But the only action you'd be taking today would be to authorize that first tranche of bonds that would be added on to the municipal infrastructure bond that's on your agenda right now. So you're right on target. It's the first one, the second one planned, but not executed.
Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions on this proposal? Councilman Duden?
Yeah. So I take it that there would not be any public hearing on this proposal?
The, well, I guess, these types of conversations, when you say public hearing, meaning just individually on this bond or, right, this is a type of bond that can be approved just by city council. Any of the public hearings for budget hearings, these types of public hearings, it's being presented that way. So there are those kinds of public hearings, but this does not go out to a public vote.
So we have a public hearing, we've had a public hearing on the water sewer bond here recently.
Correct, because that's a GO bond.
And that's going to be something that will be voted on by Lincoln.
Right.
But this is something that would not be voted on by the people.
Correct, so our stormwater bond is a general obligation bond, and that does go to a vote of the people. This one is the municipal infrastructure bonds, which does not require a vote of the people.
And how have we used these in the past?
We've used these for a number of once, and in fact, in this budget, we are currently planning on using the municipal infrastructure bonds to purchase vehicles. These are vehicles that are planned out in the CIP and part of that, but because we're able to front-load and get that good interest rate and lower prices rather than the inflation that was talked about, we're able to utilize it in those kinds of ways. We've also used, since I've been here primarily for vehicles, we did it for snowplows back in 2021. We also did it for sidewalks back in 2021 and, 2020 and 2021. So we've done sidewalks and vehicles primarily.
All right, thank you. Councilman Duden?
Last one. So could something be done the way we do things now? Because currently, homeowners aren't responsible for them at all. If they shared some of that responsibility, would that help with the cost of repairs?
If the homeowner shared some of that responsibility? Sure, right now, under the code, it's entirely on the city to hold that is responsible for maintaining and improving the sidewalks. It would take a code requirement change to require residents to pay for a portion or all of the sidewalks again. I believe that was up for a vote twice in the nineties. And so that was what our community said then. I don't know that there's been a community conversation since then about it.
I think that's where we, I think that's what we're missing out on is that public input on something like this. We're not going to be able to get that, and that's something that could be included.
Well, I mean, if someone wants to pay to repair their sidewalks in front of their house, I mean, there's not a law saying that they can't do it, right? If someone chooses to do that, they can. People just don't because it's the responsibility of the city. So, I mean, if someone wants to repair their sidewalk, there's not a code saying that they're not allowed to do that, and it's only the city's responsibility.
As a matter of fact, you can, you have to get a permit. But once you have said that you're going to repair the sidewalks in front of your house, you get a small rebate per section of sidewalk. So it is possible legally for people to tackle the sidewalks adjacent to their property. But if you were talking about public hearings on these types of budget amendments, not every budget amendment gets a public hearing because of the way we've set it up. It's not intentional to keep the public out, but based on what we heard at the budget hearing, we bring another set of amendments forward. And so we, at that point, we are taking the public's comments and interest into consideration in this set of budget amendments. And/or we brought back budget amendments that did not clear through the first time. And so the public has had an opportunity to discuss their feelings and opinions on these proposals.
Sometimes my questions are for those people at home.
Okay.
To learn about this process.
All right, thank you. I am going to acknowledge that the clock says that it is, oh, 2:01, and that a director's meeting would normally start at this time. But if you'll just bear with us, directors will begin immediately following the discussion of the last item. And we will just stand up, stretch, and sit back down again and carry directors in this room. So number 11, submitted by Councilman Bowers. To transfer $133,121 in vacancy savings, $65,008 from fiscal year 2223, and $68,003 from fiscal year 2324, from the finance city clerk budget, finance reappropriations, general expense employee benefits to the city council fiscal year 202425 budget, and appropriate $34,879 from general fund reserves for a total of $168,000 to city council fiscal year 202425 budget. To appropriate an additional $168,000 of general fund reserves to city council fiscal year 2526 budget. These appropriations would be used to fund a maximum of $24,000 for each council member to hire individual council aides at their own discretion. Council aides would be used to help council members fulfill their duties with policy research, resident services, assistance on projects, and neighborhood support. These aides are optional. Council members cannot hire the same individual. Council members can determine the length and dollar amount of their aide, and the contracts run through city law. No appropriations for council aides will be re-appropriated to future fiscal years. At the end of each fiscal year, any council aide appropriations will lapse to general fund reserves. Councilman Bowers?
Thanks so much. We often talk as a community about how difficult it is to run for office and how the people that generally run for office tend to be independently wealthy, not have family commitments, and have the time to be able to run for office. I think so often we leave out the other end of that equation, and that's actually serving in office once we get in there. And the realities of what it means to do our duties that we were elected to do. During my first term, I was a social worker in a middle school. And my career as a social worker really is what led me into running for office and being asked for office and eventually winning my campaigns. Because of my work as a social worker, I've worked on the front lines of our child welfare system. I've worked with families throughout the lifespan. And I've seen behind the curtain, you know, the struggles that many families in our city face that is not a reflection of a moral failure of their personal decisions, rather a lack of jobs or a lack of resources or a lack of support that is needed. And it's because of that viewpoint in my career as a social worker that gave me the viewpoint that things have to do more often with what your zip code is rather than, you know, the decisions that people make. And we see this through our Health Place Matters that's done through the Health Department that shows the wide variation in life expectancy and obesity and access to care. So during my first term, when I was a school social worker, I was in my building from 7:30 to 3:30. And people elected me because I was a social worker. However, that made it difficult for me to be able to communicate with city staff. It made it difficult for me to be able to do the investigations that constituents would write in about. Then later on, I had some family members that developed some health, some serious health problems that required me to deal with some crises that came up with some new long-term health issues with family members. And that impacted my ability to serve. And I think that would for anyone else, when, you know, the people that they love most are in the hospital with a new diagnosis, that's potential, that's life-altering. And I don't think that the question that someone could ask is, well, why run for office then? If you have these family commitments, and if you have this job working with kids that requires you to be in a building for, during the school day, why run for office? And I don't think that's the right way to look at this. I think more people want to have their elected officials be representative of their community. I think people want to have elected officials who work traditional jobs, who have, who are children that take care of their parents or parents that take care of their kids, that have these family responsibilities, that understand what it's like for everyday Lincolnites in their day-to-day lives. And I think that we need to wield our power to be able to create a system where regardless of who the community selects to represent them, that they are then able to discharge their duties. Currently, the seven-member council has one receptionist that works less than 40 hours a week that by their position cannot work after 4:00 PM. When I speak with residents, residents are concerned and surprised by the fact that we only have one person to help us in the discharge of our duties. People have been surprised by the lack of, strength of us being able to investigate claims, to be able to support neighborhoods, and to be able to attend neighborhood meetings. I mean, some of my neighborhood meetings attend during council meetings, right? And they have to go without someone from the city council office being able to attend those meetings. Work should be able to still continue even when our family is in the hospital. Our ability, our residents' access to their councilperson should still be able to continue. Access to our office should still be able to continue when our family members are in the hospital or when we have a crisis with a student. And we should be able to have the work for our district continue on outside of the individual person, and that's what this helps to do. So because of the current reality of what we have and the perception that our constituents have, I did a little bit of digging into what other cities do. And it's, the policy nerd in me thinks it's fascinating to see how other cities structure things out. Some city councils have a budget analyst specifically in their department to do an ongoing audit of the city's budget year-round. Some have staff specifically geared towards policy initiatives that are directed by the city council, like for housing or early childhood. Some have some more, what I would call, infrastructure positions that focus more on communication and outreach or working with intergovernmental agencies. When we look at Baton Rouge, you know, each of their folks have a legislative assistant. Colorado Springs, you know, they have a budget analyst. They have three administrative staff, communication, and constituent outreach person. Even our recent colleagues that we met in our intergovernmental meeting between Boise and Topeka, Boise has three staff supporting their council. And Topeka, a city half our size, has three staff members supporting their council. So that's what leads to this proposal, to allow part-time aides that are completely optional to assist council members with policy research, supporting neighborhoods, and resident services to make sure that residents all have access to council members' office. This is going to be paid for through transfer funds. So two years ago, the council had a policy position that went unfilled. The council at that time voted to transfer the funding for that position for the next two years to provide the city clerk's office with a person to help out their office. That position did not go filled for two years. This at first will be filled by those vacancy savings coming back in from the city clerk's office, which is under finance, to come back into council, council to be able to fund that. Because this is optional, if we go over those dollars, the rest of those dollars in would come out of general fund reserves that we have built up. This does not eliminate the position that was created by the city council to assist the city clerk's office. Some of the things that I've heard from folks is that, you know, they don't want to manage someone or that they feel like they don't need someone to help them out. And I think that's great. Everyone's situation is different. My situation is going to be different than everyone else's here, and everyone else has their own individual family situation or their own personal situation. So this is completely optional. I've heard questions about, you know, security or confidentiality, and, you know, our communication is foible. There's not information that is protected by law and that is strictly confidential. And we've seen that when folks have written in, and they were surprised that their email is now on part of the public. and they are surprised that their email is now on, on part of the public record. So everything's foible. There's not secure confidential information that is being hidden. I've heard folks say, well, you know, if we need outside help, then we should be able to pay for it ourselves, not through city funds. And I think that further creates the bigger difference that the only people that can, one, only then run, but then also serve are individuals who are independently wealthy and have the freedom and the, not the same time constraints as many other Lincolnites. I've also heard concerns about, you know, what's sustainable funding for this? And the same way that the mayor's aides are funded, the same way that H.R. is funded, and the same way that our receptionist is paid for, this becomes a line item. This is not about creating competing, between competing individuals or personalities. But this is really about ensuring that the vision of Lincoln is that we have a government where anyone can run, anyone can serve, as long as that they are elected and chosen for by their community. Regardless of their family commitments, regardless of their life situation, they will be provided the tools to be able to serve their constituents and to meet their constituents' need in a way that's sustainable. And without all answering any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I have some questions.
I'm going to get some water while you talk, if that's okay, because I feel like I just rambled for a while.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you, Councilman Bowers. My understanding from your proposal is that these assistants will not be city employees. Can you explain why that is throughout you've decided upon?
Yeah, so I got that from city law. There was a couple of different ways that this could be structured. Yehansi, do you want to kind of, there was like, talk for a while about, you know, would it be contract folks or would it be city employees or whatever? I mean, if the desire is that, you know, they become city employees, I think that's an interesting conversation. But do you mind sharing a little bit about the history about how we landed on to them being classified in this way?
Sure, Yehansi Christie, city attorney. I mean, I think that when this was presented to me, there were questions about ways to do this. And obviously, one option is to add a F.T.E. into the budget. And then another option would be independent contractor or consultant. And so I think, I think when you say that the idea came from me, I think that I presented options, right?
I shouldn't have said that, sorry.
No, no, but I just want to clarify. I wasn't saying we should do it this way or that way. I just presented options of how it could happen. And then here is where we are. So, yeah.
So why, why was this determined to be an independent contractor as opposed to a city employee?
Okay, so I see what you're saying. One of the flexibilities of this is that if someone needs someone short, like for a limited time, for like a specific project, this allows them to do that where that same flexibility necessarily wouldn't exist if there was, you know, a part-time employer or whatever that needed, you know, consistent hours or, you know, that needed this to be like ongoing, right? So if someone wanted to hire someone for a specific project for something that's time-limited, let's say that there's a policy proposal that's coming up or there's some issue that's on the horizon that they needed assistance with, this could be time-limited and allows more discretion for council members to spend it as they see fit. So if someone says that they don't need it for the entire year or whatever and they want someone for three months to set something up, this allows them the flexibility to do that.
Okay, so, so some council members may choose to exercise this permanently. Some may choose to exercise it sporadically and some not at all. And that provides the flexibility to do so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then could you walk me through the hiring decision made? That hiring process as a counselor decides that they're going to hire an independent contractor? Can you walk me through that process a bit?
Yeah, so individual council member would be able to hire someone that they trust, that they feel like would be a good fit. City law would develop the contract and the law, the contract would be signed by city law. That includes in there that this can't be used for political reasons, can't be used for personal reasons, outlines, you know, that scope. And so individual council members have the ability to pick someone that they trust. And that's something that I've heard from multiple folks is the importance of being able to find someone that they trust, someone that they feel like would be a good fit for their management style. And those contracts would run through city law.
Okay. Do these, do these assistants, are they subject to typical city hiring requirements? Drug testing?
I would imagine not. I mean, unless, because it'd be like a contract, the same way that we, I don't think we drug test like the contractors that, you know, the city hires for other things, so, no.
Okay, so probably not criminal background checks?
No.
Educate, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if maybe the city attorney should be involved in this conversation about the legal pro- right, because this is a professional services agreement? Or is the, I guess, I feel like we probably can get more accurate information from the city attorney.
I'm happy to talk about this. I would also say we can involve the H.R. department as well. But I think just generally speaking, I think there's always exceptions, but I think the answer was fairly accurate, right? If you're hiring a, someone as an independent contractor and/or a consultant in this fashion, they typically are not going through like a full-time employment, we always refer to as F.T.E.s, going through the traditional hiring procedure for a city employee that would have benefits, access to, you know, city email, access to other city facilities and resources, and then including, you know, onboarding, orientation. Typically, the way that it's drafted right now is outside of that process, so.
I just wanted to make sure there was legal accuracy in the answers, so. I didn't mean to cut off Councilman Beckius.
I'd like to just ask, so would these would be professional services agreements? Or would they be some other form of contract?
It's my understanding that the proposal that is in front of the council today is to have them be professional services.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, sorry.
All right.
Mr. Christie, since you're up here, Councilman Bowers referenced policies that would, that are part of your standard, I guess, professional services agreements regarding political affiliation or usage. Could you talk through that, describe that to me?
While I don't have, what I can say is we have a consultant agreement and/or independent contractor agreement that has standard terms and conditions. As I stand here right now, the specific language about, any potential specific language about political affiliation or, I can't cite that right now. But what I can tell you is we have standard conditions that outline the expectations and the rules and that you are an independent contractor. And here's the scope of work and here's the term and here's the compensation. And if you are an independent contractor, it has language in there about providing your own insurance, your own liability, that sort of things, and not having, kind of, some of the things I just touched on earlier about not using city resources, that sort of thing. So it has that type of language in there.
Sure. Do you know if it allows for, in this particular circumstance, an individual, an individual to work for a particular, particular city counselor and also be on their paid campaign staff at the same time?
What I can tell you is you can't use city resources for campaign purposes.
Sure. But no restriction that you, you cannot work for both at the same time?
No, because I mean, it's what people do outside their own time and with their own resources, right? Like, city resources, city time could not be used for political things. Just like we can't have, you know, no one, none of us could hand Ben, you know, a stack of walk cards and say, go door knock for us and, you know, help us get elected, right? That would be horribly inappropriate. But what people do outside their own time, you know, is not meant, like, this would not restrict what people do outside on their own time with their own resources.
So, Mr. Christie, could you walk me through a potential scenario here? If the proposal states that these assistants can be used for neighborhood resident services and neighborhood support, would that preclude a counselor's aide from going door-to-door, giving out information about the great things that counselor has done, say, three months prior to an election, albeit they are not handing out election material?
I think it's a really interesting point because I remember like when the quarter cent sales tax went through a couple of years ago, there was a very similar conversation when the city decided to use a couple hundred thousand dollars for education in mailers to let people know why, why the current state of roads were and why this would be beneficial. So, you know, that's definitely not a new question, but it's a question that's come up in the past. And I think what happened then, because this was like 2019, was that it was determined to not be political. And so I don't know if that's necessarily best practices to have your person go out and go door-to-door. And I think anyone, any of us could say that was, you know, obviously inappropriate. But I see your concern about, you know, what's considered political and what's not. And that's something that the city has faced before.
What I can tell you is, again, generally speaking, a lot of this, the state law that speaks to a lot of this, the example that Councilman Bowers is talking about, without going into weeds too much, there is a difference between education and advocating, right? And so you cannot use city funds to sort of advocate any sort of, any campaign purposes. We would, if, you know, if something like this was to go forward, if it's not in our standard language, we could certainly put it in the, the language of the contract, right? But, but again, the expectation would be and is always that any city funds are not used for campaign or advocacy, or those examples that you just gave about going around, which I, it sounded like a campaign to me, that what your example about going around election and knocking on doors and stuff. The expectation would be that city funds-
So just, just giving out information about the good deeds that a counselor has done.
And I think that's very-
Have anything to do with a campaign per se, but?
Okay, and fair, and what I heard was, was campaign-type, type stuff, but?
I think therein exactly lies the issue.
But, but regardless, the expectation would be that it would just be for city.
And I think it's very similar to the fact that our mayor currently has, you know, aides, right? And that's, that would be, you know, inappropriate for them to do that. And, you know, those similar questions, I don't think have come up with that.
So, Councilman Bowers, can you talk a little bit about the oversight of each of these contracts and each individual hiring counselor? Is, is this, the oversight of these contracts and whether or not they're being met, is it solely in the hands of each counselor?
Yeah, so individual council members would be able to select their person. That the length, terms, and duration, they're crafted, city law develops the contract, and they're executed, right? In terms of oversight, that would be up to the individual council members, just like other department heads supervise their staff. And, you know, we definitely have other contracts throughout the city that are being overseen through, you know, the process of the person that oversees it. So, yeah, it'd be overseen by the individual, but the contracts would run through city law. And if anyone has concerns, they of course can reach out to the Accountability Disclosure Committee or Commission or to city law.
And then how would you envision that taxpayers would be able to evaluate the merits of administering the program?
Well, through elections, right? I mean, the same way that with the mayoral aides, right? I mean, how do we determine if the mayoral aides are being effective or efficient, right? We do that through elections. And if presidents feel like they're not getting, you know, the best service from their elected official, they can always vote them out or recall them, as has been attempted in the past.
And mayoral aides are city employees, correct?
Correct.
Not independent contractors?
Correct. But the outcome is still the same in terms of how do people, how do residents feel that their council member is serving them? And the way that that is done is through elections.
Okay.
Right.
The job description provided does not specifically indicate that aides will interact with city staff? Is that correct?
They don't indicate that they won't interact with city staff?
That they will interact with city staff. The job description states that they will fulfill their duties with policy research, resident services, assistance on projects, and neighborhood support?
Yeah, and interact with department heads, ask questions on our behalf if needed to help convene folks together, like neighborhood meetings. For instance, there is a project in my district that I'm trying to get some city folks together for and to get the developer for and to gather the neighborhood for. And so the individual could help, you know, reach out to the 30 different people and coordinate schedules to develop a time to get people together. So, I mean, there's nothing that's barring them from working with city staff or city department heads.
Can you envision what other city resources these independent contractors will have access to? You said, for example, they won't have access to computers. They won't have access to city emails, either their own or their, their city counselor, their employers. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, unless the council wants to provide city emails to, you know, be able to make sure that information's being tracked or whatever, I think that's something that I would totally be willing to entertain if people are interested in providing an email account. But similar to other contracts, individual contractors would be responsible for providing their own materials and resources.
Okay, so they would not be using city copied machines, office space?
No, they would be in the use of our duties. I mean, I don't think it matters if myself or someone else stands at the copy machine and makes a copy to hand things out to folks. I don't think that that matters. So, yeah, no, they would have those, access to those resources. But in terms of like their ability to do their job with, you know, communication, they would be, they would have their own email, they would have their own computer. But when we talk about, you know, copies and being able to print stuff off, I don't think it matters if I hit print or if, you know, the person that's helping me in my job hits print.
I'm just trying to get an understanding as to how this, what this actually looks like in practice. As you mentioned, the city council recently reduced its staffing time for its secretary position because the assessment could not identify 40 hours of working time per week to be completed. Why not use a city employee who has a living wage with benefits for this type of work rather than an independent contractor?
Well, I was an advocate to keep that position at 40 hours a week to allow them to have, you know, a full-time ability to do their job. So, I mean, I was an advocate for that position to stay at 40 hours a week.
When I emailed you, you did not respond?
And I had made that clear, but either which way-
No, you did not.
Okay.
But keep going.
Okay. So I was an advocate for keeping that position at 40 hours a week and I always have been. Similar to, two years ago when we removed that position, I was the lone vote to not remove that position. Another reason why I think that, you know, instead of the council sharing another staff member is, you know, we've had, in the past five years that I've been here, we've had three receptionists. Their direct supervisor changes every year at the change of who the chair is. And I think that makes it hard for continuity of the person that is serving the entire council at large. This allows individual council members to have the trust and security that the person that they're working with or talking to will be focused on, you know, the priorities that they're identifying. And so I would hate to add another position that would have high turnover like we've seen with our current receptionist position.
Part of your proposal states that counselors are not allowed to pool resources, i.e., they're not allowed to go in together to hire individuals as a group. Specifically, I think it states council members cannot hire the same individual. Why is that?
So that came out of concern from multiple council members that had brought this up. And I think it, because that wasn't originally in my proposal, in my thoughts with beginning conversations. But the reason why I added in is that was something that was asked of council members to be included in. And I think that one benefit that does come out of that is it makes it more clear and more cleaner on, you know, instead of, let's say, I'm going to use Justin here as an example. Justin and I had, you know, brought on the same person. Whose time are they working on when it comes to a specific event? You know, like if someone's sitting here in a council meeting, you know, helping to provide follow-up, does that count as James Michael time? Or does that count as Justin time? And so I think it makes it cleaner and to identify that. And I think Brody had a response to that also.
Yeah, I just want to chime in on this because this was a friendly amendment that Councilman Bowers accepted on my behalf. This was something I requested. And, you know, I'm supportive. I don't think that's a secret of this measure. And the reason why I'm supportive is I think council members need individualized support. And I wanted to make sure those lines were as clear as possible that this individual works for, or with this council member and this individual B works with this council member. I thought it'd be a lot more appropriate for accountability and for management if council members could not pool their resources to hire a staff member or a team of staff members, but instead keep those lines clear of who they answer to, who they work for, and who is responsible for that individual contractor. And so I really appreciate Councilman Bowers compromising with me and accepting that request. That was something that I was very strong in saying that, that I would need to see that to be able to support it. So thank you, Councilman Bowers, for being supportive. And Councilman Beckius, I hope that explains my rationale how- that explains my rationale behind that request.
Before we keep the, before the conversation continues, I do want to note the clock. It's just a minute shy of 2:30. Council session starts at 3 o'clock, and we still need probably 15 or 20 minutes for directors.
Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. This proposal utilizes funds from the city clerk's office. Councilman Bowers, can you discuss with me how removing these funds will impact the city clerk's planning?
So like I mentioned in my opening statements, this does not eliminate that assistant position that was created, and I can't remember the right term was assistant, or, you know, aide, or whatever, for the city clerk's office. This does not eliminate that position. What this does is takes the money in vacancy savings, because the position that the council essentially created two years ago went unfilled, meaning that those dollars went into the city clerk's office, which is under finance. We would be asking for those back to pay for, you know, the, to provide seed money for this, and if the need goes beyond those dollars for these first two years, then that would then come out of general funds. So it would not eliminate the position that the city clerk's office so desperately needed.
Have you discussed with the city clerk how removing these funds will impact their planning?
Well, I mentioned that in, with the finance director, who is in charge of that office, and that money, when I said, you know, where are those dollars at? And they said that it's sitting there in the coffers as vacancy savings. So they're currently not being used, and kind of similar to, you know, the concerns that, you know, we've talked about, we've heard about with the council reserves, money sitting there without a plan to be used, I think that this is a good use of those dollars.
Have you talked to the city clerk about whether or not those funds have a plan to be used?
I've had conversations with the city clerk's office, and I'm not gonna delve into, you know, private conversations that I've had with staff, but that position will still exist, and those dollars that were originally used for, that were gonna fill a position for two years, that went unfilled, those dollars would then come back.
When did you have a conversation with the city clerk about this?
I'm not going to disclose my confidential conversations that I have with staff members.
I'm calculating this proposal to be a 409% increase in spending for the city council's staffing. Is that about correct, do you think?
Well, I think when our budget is so extremely small, it's easy to say that it's 100, 200, 300, 400%, when our budget is extremely small, especially in relation to other departments, right? I mean, if you have $5 and someone gives you another $5, yeah, you're 100% richer, but you're definitely not 100% rich.
Well, in terms of dollars, it takes it from $41,000 annually to 100, to $209,000 annually. Thank you. And that's all my questions.
All right. Are there any other comments? And please watch the clock. Councilman Duden.
Either way, I kind of, we've been listening to this back-and-forth business, and I thought about this as well. It's still another way to grow government, and that 7 times 24 equaling the 168,000, if that's an expectation every year, it's still gonna have to be budgeted for, if that's the expectation, whether it's used or not. I just, I just see that as a problem. Since I've been elected and took office on May 15th of 2023, I've missed one council meeting, I've attended numerous outside events, I still try to maintain my, my own personal life, I, I do things with family, go to family events, that sort of thing. When I ran for office, it was my name on the ticket. I didn't have an aide, I had people helping me with my election. I do have a pool of advisors that I sometimes consult with, and I'm not spending a dime on it, and if I think if I really wanted to dig in the weeds of city government, I'd hire a person to work for me on my own, avoiding any contractual agreements and that sort of thing. I just, I just don't see this as being a real benefit. Right now, we actually, four people in the city council, if we actually needed someone to hire, four of us could, could vote that way and make that decision, and do some of the things that you're talking about. And I don't really see, if we had a big problem here with city government, why we would be able to do that, so.
But I think, you know-
Wait a second, I'm so sorry. Councilman Weber.
That's my position, and I am watching the clock.
All right, Councilman Weber.
I'm watching the clock, so time me. First, I do want to say that every time I tell constituents that the seven of us share one staff member, they are also surprised, but I think we all agree, Ben is wonderful, and we're so lucky to have him as our one staff member, right? But, talking about, you know, Councilman Duden, I think that's the perfect illustration of why this is optional. I am so glad that you have that flexibility and that availability, but that does not mean that we should be excluding working-class people from serving in government, and we cannot uncouple the reality that there are personal health commitments, there are personal financial commitments, there are personal commitments, and, you know, I'm glad that you've been able to do it all yourself. I would strongly recommend then, don't run for other office, because if you're in the legislature, you're gonna have staff. If you're mayor, you're gonna have staff, right? If you're on the Public Service Commission, you'll have more staff, right? Like, we have to be careful when we say, "Well, we don't need it." There are other elected officials that have staff, because one person cannot serve dozens of thousands of people 24/7, and I think we need to set the standard that we will be accessible to our constituents as often as we can, and that's why we need staffing. And I also, you know, I get concerned when people tell me they have a, a group of advisors. Are they doing city work, or are they doing political work, or is it a hybrid? That's why I think we need to have clear-cut lines, that this person is maybe a political consultant, and this person works with the person in their official capacity as a city council member doing city work. And the last thing I just have to say, I, I heard a lot of sentiment from two of my colleagues on this dais about growing government, right? But I never hear that argument when we're adding employees to human resources, I never hear that argument when we're adding aides to another elected official's office or department. I didn't hear that when we voted for the SAFER grant to have 18 firefighters, which I think was the right decision. But including 18 firefighters is growing the government by my colleague's definition, and I, I don't think, I don't think it's fair that only one department, whenever they try to add staff, is painted as this evil bad guy trying to grow government, when we're trying to be more accountable, transparent, and responsive to our constituents. That's what government is there for.
Councilman Weber, I would just make note of the fact that we've had discussions, you and I personally have had discussions about staffing levels, and I know that several of us have had discussions about staffing levels. I think the main point of contention here is whether or not we grow staffing at a slow rate, staffing that can be shared with everyone, or if we break open the floodgate and allow individual counselors to have independent contractors working specifically for them. As you look, as Councilman Bowers stated, as you look across the nation, you will be very hard-pressed to find aides that are not city employees. You will be very hard-pressed to find aides that are independent contractors, specifically overseen and hired directly by specific city council members. Make no mistake, this is a very different proposal than what you see nationwide.
And, and I, I need to respond, because we have been having these conversations for months, and there was no appetite to collaborate on this issue. And so if that was a concern-
Not on my end.
I am going to call this meeting to an end. That's not, I didn't do that, because I didn't hit the gavel, but I'm just looking at city law right here. But I would like to call this meeting to an end to give more time, or at least a little bit of time for director's meeting. We have a short agenda, but I would like to at least move forward with director's agenda. I understand that there is a lot of conversation and energy for a conversation here, and I expect that Wednesday's meeting at 1 o'clock will be robust, and it'll be robust. So let's leave it at that. I do need to ask, and would like to ask, is there anyone here wishing to speak from the public on any of these proposals? Seeing none, this concludes our meeting on final budget proposals. Thank you all for your proposals. Thank you all for your time and attention today. We will reconvene in council chambers this Wednesday, August 14th, at 1:00 p.m. to vote on these proposals. The proposed budget and proposals can be viewed online at lincoln NE.gov. The keyword is "budget." And with that, we are adjourned.